Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to call to order Tiburon Town Council regular meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Thier is absent. Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Frederick. And Mayor Ryan.
Here. Thank you. So before we jump into the items on the agenda, we want to offer the public an opportunity to speak on any items that are not on our agenda tonight. So Madam Clerk, could you instruct the public on how to do that, please?
Yes, thank you. If you're calling in using Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you'd like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're using Zoom, I'll invite you to turn your camera and microphone on to address the council. Please accept the request from the Zoom host that you're being promoted to a panelist. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Thank you. And with this public comment period and any public comment period on for the agenda that we have, we're going to take public comment from people who are live in the audience first, and then subsequently we'll go to the online population. So is there anyone in the audience who wants to make a public comment? Anybody on Zoom who wants to make a public comment?
I'm seeing none.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public comment period then, and we'll move right into our agenda. The first item tonight is the consent calendar. Do we have any members of the council who want to pull any items from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Any members of the public want to make a comment on consent items?
Seeing none.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? We can just say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So that passes three, nothing. Thank you. Next, we move into our action items. The first action item is about the painted bins, and it's considering a request from Painted Bins, a program of sustainable Marin to approve the placement of five trash slash recycling slash compost bin stations that accommodate changeable artwork in downtown Tiburon. Do we have a staff report on this before the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Give me a second to see if we can get this up on the screen. This one? This one? Okay. And. Okay, yeah. Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This item is a request for council to consider approval and funding of a project we're calling the Painted Bins Project. The person proposing this project is Kathy Huber. She's here in the audience, and we'll be giving her a presentation shortly. I just wanted to briefly let council know that as the staff report indicates, if council wishes to move forward with this project, the town does receive funding on an annual basis from Zero Waste Marin, which is a JPA the town is a member of. And this would be the very appropriate project to use this funding for, as the goal of the zero waste funding is to reduce waste, and particularly with the recent passage of SB thirteen eighty-three, edible food waste is one of the highest priorities for us to work on. So with that, I'd be happy to turn it over to Ms. Huber, who will come to the podium.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Is that better? Thank you, council, for having me here today. I'm Kathy Huber with Painted Bins, and we use children's art on compost bins to divert food waste from the landfill, methane gas from the atmosphere, and to create environ- environmental stewards in our communities. Oops, that didn't work. Okay, one is changing. Okay, there. This is an example of a painted bin. You can see the children's art on the side. It goes, the children's art goes on either side of the bins. The art is both inspirational and educational. We work with local schools to have an art contest in which students create art about and posters about why it's important to compost. We then have an independent jury who selects the art that goes on the on the painted bins. The bins actually have been vetted by both our Holler Mill Valley refuse as well as cities. They are, first question that people always ask is, are they rodent and animal proof? You can see the hopper. It's an enclosed hopper. The, there's a bin on the inside which actually is to collect the contents, and that bin has rollers on it, easy for the Holler to take it away. The bins are ADA compliant, and they also have foot pedals that allow for hands-free disposal. The other thing that I think is important to point out is we worked with Mill Valley refuse to identify how much food waste could be diverted from the landfill. And these are fifty-gallon bins, and the, the concept was that if they are quarter full, it would remove one fuel burning car from the years, excuse me, from the road each year. So if they were a quarter full each week, that would be the equivalent of removing one fuel burning car. So with ten bins in Tiburon, we would be removing ten fuel burning cars from the road each year. Also, we are launching in Corner Madera Town Park next month, and excited to be doing that. Whoops, pressed it the wrong way again. Okay, we're excited to tell you about the benefits that we would bring to Tiburon. The first benefit that Greg mentioned is that we would help cities, we help cities like Tiburon, towns like Tiburon comply with SB thirteen eighty-three, which you're probably familiar with, but requires jurisdictions in California to divert seventy-five percent of their food waste from the organic waste, which is primarily food waste, from the landfill as compared by two thousand and twenty-five as compared to two thousand and fourteen levels. We're building environmental stewards by working with kids in the schools, and not only do they go through an art contest, but ideas to have an art show so that every child is a winner. The community can come in, learn about composting and climate change. And also, I want to point out that the idea is changing the art every single year through a similar contest. And the, the art actually on the bins beautifies our communities. It turns an ordinary collection bin, waste collection bin, into a piece of art, which causes people to stop, look, and learn. Do I have this down right? Yes. Okay, we're excited actually to share with you who are partners all, which all, which increase our impact. Early on, we started working with Mill Valley refuse and Zero Waste Marin. We put the Tiburon logo up there, hoping that we would be partnering with you all. We have the support of the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary Clubs, the libraries actually interested in possibly hosting this art show with all of the art. And also, we've been working with Bel Air and Reed Elementary Schools. The students there have already started creating art because Belvedere has approved the Painted Bin Program for Belvedere Community Center. You've probably already are familiar with what we've accomplished such so far. We are here to ask for your approval to move forward with the Painted Bins Program so that we can move forward with executing the plan. And these, we worked very closely with the chamber. Deanne is here to answer questions later about any of the location that you might question. But as you can see on this slide, there are three different bin stations in green, and those represent the bins for recycling trash and compost, where the yellow bins represent two bin stations for recycling and trash. Each bin, as I said, would have two works of art on it. Greg already addressed that the Zero Waste Marin funds can cover the bin costs. You can see what they are for a triple versus a double station. I will point out that each one of these, this entire proposal was discounted by two and a half percent, which is the volume discount that the vendor provides for a ten-burden order or more. And one thing I also was going to point out real quickly is that Painted Bins helps recover the cost of the art photography and processing that goes on the bins and working with the schools. This slide I love to show because it's some of the art that was created out of Corner Madera, and it just, I think it tugs at your heartstrings, especially if you read the, what this little third grader wrote on his poster, which is the one all the way to the right. The greatest threat to our planet is the belief that someone else will save it. So thank you. I'd like to open it up to questions and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Fantastic. Thank you. Do I have any questions from council?
Yeah, please.
So this, this is an ongoing program. The art changes every year, so it's not a one-time cost.
Correct. One-time cost for Tiburon for the bins, but for the art process, photography and processing, that, that is our cost that we assume.
And so you maintain the art on the bins every year?
Yeah, so it's, it's basically it's photographed, and then it's processed onto coroplast to put into sleeves on the side. So that's what we do with it. Yeah.
All right. And then I, I am sure that you will gather the bins if the program ends for some reason. Is that?
That will gather the bins?
Yes.
I'll look to Greg.
The town would own the bins.
Okay, that, that's good. And just one more question.
Sure.
It looked like there was no one location where all the different kinds of material for disposal could be disposed of.
Let me go back to that slide. The three bin locations have compost, recycling, and trash.
They all do.
Yes, the green ones. Let me go back to that.
The green ones. All right.
Yeah, those green. Let's, let's see here.
Not working.
Say again?
Let me see.
Why is this not working?
I don't worry.
Okay, okay. So the green bins on that slide actually show the proposed locations for the triple, triple bin stations, which have compost, recycling, and trash. And the yellow bins are for recycling and trash.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have a a quick question about how you, how you engage the kids in the art. Is this something where you reach out to local schools, or do you go beyond that to other groups? How does that work?
That's a good question. Yes, we reach out to local schools. What's typically work best if we have a teacher who kind of spearheads the project? We are working with one of the two teachers actually over at Bel Air and Reed. One is the art teacher and one is a runs the green team over there as well. So what we do, just to share a little bit of information, we provide them with videos they can watch that we found, information about why it's important to compost, inspirational points they can discuss with their children.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And then if we do approve it, what is the timeline we can expect for implementation?
Good, good question. So the bins are on, they take about four to five months to get here. So the art, as I said, is being created right now. The idea would be to have an art show, possibly at the library or somewhere to show it all, and then the judging. And then perhaps tie in unveiling into some sort of an event as well, when the bins come in and the art's actually installed on the bins.
Right. Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, just by, so you're working with the library. Have they?
Deanne actually has been in conversations with the library.
The library is one of our supporters, and so they know that we're looking for a venue to do the artwork show, if you will. And so we'll work closely with them to find out where we should be doing that.
So, so the director of the library is making the decision, not the volunteers who handle the art for the library?
She's working with, Crystal's working with.
Okay.
Because you're exactly right. There is a full art schedule.
Yes.
We want to be stepful of what's already been put in place, their calendar. But there are additional rooms that we think we can use to do the actual art reception. And then we can do a digital art show online as well, and that can live, whether it be a chamber website or the library, we can find a website for that to live for the entire year. As Kathy said, everyone, you know, wants to be able to participate and contribute to the project.
And we also put all the art on our website as well. We're, I don't know if you all looked at it, but we're in the process of releasing a new website. So there is an area called Building Environmental Stewards, and that's where all the art goes, things the kids have said, you know, it's heartwarming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there any, are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item?
I do have two on Zoom when you're ready.
Oh, yeah, please go ahead. And as a reminder to the members of the public, please state your name, and then you'll have three minutes to deliver your comment. Thank you.
Okay, we will start with Jill Scott.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to make the note that, that speakers who are not mic'd within the room cannot be heard. My name is Bill Scott. My wife Jill is also listening into the call.
Thank you for that heads up and welcome. Do, did you want to make another comment, or were you just talking specifically about?
Just that. You couldn't hear what the, what the, what the lady in the front row was saying.
Understood. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We'll make a note of that going forward.
Okay, next is Seth Jacobs.
Can you hear me?
We can. Yeah, welcome.
Hi, this is Julie Jacobs. Thank you. This sounds like a good idea for many reasons. My one question or concern about it is, are these bins going to smell bad? And are we disrespecting the restaurant owners in front of whose business they may be located if they smell bad?
Sure, I can answer. I mean, the, the contents will be picked up. Greg, I don't know if you want to address how frequently Mill Valley refuse picks up, but that shouldn't pose a problem.
Yeah, I don't have the exact schedule, but I believe they're picking up virtually every day in the downtown area. Thanks. And I would note that the existing trash cans or refuse bins are open that are downtown, and that these are more sealed units, as was depicted in the pictures with the closing lid and the foot pedal.
So can we just finish with public comments, and then we'll get to answer the questions that are raised? That's all right. Thanks. Did you have any other comments, Julie?
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Sorry. Yeah, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, no, I just thought she wanted to hear about the restaurant's opinion of the bins.
I'd be interested in hearing. Sure. No, that's okay. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Deanne Biss with the Tiburon Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. So those are excellent questions. Actually, we did reach out to our downtown businesses and the locations that were identified on the map. One is outside Cafe Accree. Natali Servino and Vittorio, his brother, have supported the project, and we will, as Greg pointed out, put them in the existing location. And trash is picked up daily downtown. In terms of Fountain Plaza, that will be, you know, in a, a community space. It won't be impacted by the restaurants. And then Paulino, who owns Salt and Pepper, which is the third three-bin location, he's supportive, and those letters came in late mail, so feel free to check that out. So yes, and again, I think it's an excellent question, and the chamber will work really closely with Kathy and the Painted Bins team so that all our downtown businesses are satisfied and happy with the locations we select, because trash is important.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that clarification. Do we have anyone else in the public who needs, who wants to speak?
I'm seeing none.
Okay, and I'll close public comment period, and we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Anyone have any comments or discussion or motions that might come out of their mouths?
It's a great idea. I fully support it.
Yeah, I would say the same. It's these kinds of projects that are always so inspiring, because it's not anything that, that we think of. It's the things that come up that enhance the community so much. So I'm really looking forward to seeing them and really appreciate it. I also just want to make a comment that this is the first time I actually, I think I've seen the hybrid meeting system work like this, and I want to congratulate staff. It's working very well. So thank you.
Very smooth. So I agree with the comments. Would you like to make a motion to approve and direct staff on the funding?
Sure. So moved.
Thank you.
So seconded.
All in favor of the motion?
Say aye.
Aye.
And non-opposed. Great. Thank you so much. Yeah, I appreciate that very much. With that, we can move right into action item two, which is the Welcome to Tiburon banner sign. It's considering approval of a new welcome banner sign in the median, almost very close to where we are now. Do we have a staff report on this before Deanne gets started?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, as you said, this, this, with the completion of the library project, or almost completion, one of the aspects was enlarging the median that is in front of the library. And Deanne and I have spoken for many months about the possibility of adding a sign there, because it's the natural entrance of downtown. And we already have, as you come into town, one at the intersection of Blackfield and Tiburon Boulevard, and then just past the entrance of Blackies Pasture, we have banner signs. And the proposal is to replicate those with a new sign in the median. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deanne for the presentation.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right? Okay, I won't shout. So this, this first slide I'd like to point out is really to give you a sense for the sizing of the new sign location, the proposed sign location. A look and feel for.
Hold on. Sorry about that. Hang on one second.
Excellent. So the look and feel and a sense for the proportions of what that new sign, the proposed new sign would look like. And I, again, I think it's a critical point in our town to truly welcome people to the town of Tiburon. I know we have two other locations for signs, but this is when you're really entering all vehicles coming into Tiburon. This is really their access point. Oh, good. So why are we here? The chamber holds many events, and you know, one of the things that we focus on is how do we communicate all the wonderful things that are going on in our town? Whether it's a chamber-sponsored event, town events, library events, like their art shows, and even public emergency, you know, events that are very important, like Get Ready nine four nine two zero. So when we see an opportunity like this, where we have another touch point that's meaningful and has direct interaction with our community, as well as visitors coming into the community, it certainly gets me excited. So I think it's a very logical location. You'll see the, the X marks the spot in terms of where it would be our proposed spot. So if you're thinking of driving into town, you are far from the crosswalk by the library. You have now entered, you know, into the, the Tiburon Boulevard space. So it's, it's a natural location. You're driving slow already. You can glance and see the sign. You can see the Welcome to sign, and it say Welcome to Downtown, which I think is, again, a wonderful touch point. And it's, again, an opportunity to engage. We have Arc Ads, we have, you know, Blackies Pasture, we have the Cove Pastures, or the Cove Sign. This is a great spot for us to, again, announce to our community and visitors what's going on.
And sorry to interrupt, but
Yes.
Compared to the first photo, the, the first photo kind of doesn't really accurately represent where the sign would be, right?
So this is a little too far forward.
Okay.
So thank you for asking that question. We would want the actual sign to be further in along Tiburon Boulevard, so closer to Town Hall. This looks, it's almost closer to the library.
Yep, thanks.
Alice, I'm, maybe I'm not. So towards the water.
Have, okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you're looking at this picture, it would actually be on the other side of that next streetlight. There are three streetlights in the median. This depicts.
Oh, so I think that photo
Yeah.
on the first slide, and that was provided by Davis Sign, who do a wonderful job, but they're not into the details of this. It's more like here, and it might even be over further in the median. We want to bring it way down on Tiburon Boulevard, closer to that last lamp post.
Thank you. That's great.
Closer to the water side.
Yeah.
Correct. So I'm, I'm, you know, the way far behind me is the crosswalk for the library, for example. That's, I've passed that.
But it would be oriented the same way as in the original photo, where it's perpendicular.
That is correct. That is correct. So design considerations, again, from a sizing perspective, you can look to the Cove sign location for the size that we would be proposing. All the, the colors, the fonts, everything will be unified. We really want it to look like it's always been there. Same look and feel to, again, the Cove sign and the Blackies. And we would just add that Welcome to the Town of Tiburon, which is similar to the Blackies Pasture. If you drive by next, you're going to get to know all these signs very well. There is a beautiful raised embossed, you know, Welcome to the Town of Tiburon. So that would be the only differentiation, and we would follow the same guidelines that are in place now in terms of who can use the banner locations. So I, I know that in the staff report, you have the cost spelled out. A little cheeky, but I really do believe it is a priceless benefit to the community. Any opportunity we have to better communicate with our residents and our visitors in, in my book is a big win, and I think it's just a real sensible location. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Do we have any other questions that aren't interrupting for either Deanne or staff? Please go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, and, and you sort of addressed it, but, and I'm sure it'll be addressed when Caltrans steps in. But, but I have concerns as you're westbound, not as you're waterbound, for being able to see people in that crosswalk. They, they don't stop at the median. They just, and kids and bikes just whiz right by. I'm sure Caltrans will look at that when we talk to them, and I just wanted to, to let you know that it is something of concern. Is there, how long are we going to be backed up behind Caltrans giving us some input?
We do not anticipate a lot of time. The, the town and Caltrans for, for many years have entered into an agreement where the town more or less maintains the medians all the way from one oh one into town, and we, what we do is we seek an encroachment permit from Caltrans when we want to do work in those medians. I checked with Patrick Chris Lake and David Ishu with Public Works today, and we went over this proposal, and they don't anticipate, particularly in the location that Deanne described. We don't anticipate any major objections from Caltrans, and we anticipate being able to get an encroachment permit in a timely manner.
And dancing with Caltrans doesn't cost us any more funds.
Correct.
However, it sounds like this is just going to be an encroachment permit, sort of administrative thing, so they are not going to evaluate any safety concerns about the placement.
As part of the encroachment permit application, we will provide a, a diagram of the median and in the proposed location of the sign, and it'll be based on that information that they'll evaluate the permit application. But again, we, David Ishu is very familiar with Caltrans requirements in terms of clearance and that sort of thing, and he doesn't anticipate an issue with getting that.
All right. So it was not so much clearances line of sight. I mean, as it is now, the raised bed that the library created does block views, and this may not be any worse than that, but I really think we need to look at that cross, crossing at Mar West and cars traveling west on Tiburon Boulevard, and what the blockage would be for seeing people crossing.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to show I do have, which may be helpful. Let me see if I can call it up.
You know, I, I'm just, I'm just advocating for us to consider that seriously with respect to placement.
Right.
Placement.
Not sure why it's not showing.
See now, when you're walking along or driving, that is not what you see.
But this.
There are places where you actually cannot see people on the Belvedere side of, of that crosswalk as they approach the median.
But just, but just the, the sign would be in this area right here.
All right, ju- just consider it. If there's an, if this doesn't work out well, and there's an alternative place, even though it is an aesthetic, I'm hoping that safety and line of sight will be your primary focus.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have anyone in the public who wants to make a comment on this item? Do we have anyone in the public who wants to make a comment on this item?
Seeing none.
Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion.
I will just make a motion to approve and we are supposed to do it talking about funding.
Right. Two things I'd like to mention. First, there appears to be a $200 discrepancy between the staff report and Diane's slide. I'm going to go with Diane's slide, which had 13,565, I believe. And I think the staff report said 13,365. I'm suggesting that council consider using American Rescue Plan funding for this item. And those are the two things I'd like to mention.
Great. Thank you. So.
And then I'll, I'll add to the motion that we use American Rescue Plan funding.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, second.
All right. All in favor of the motion? And not opposed. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item tonight is a discussion item and it is a discussion on the Tiburon 2040 general plan. We're here to get an update from the Community Development Director.
So let me see here. I don't have to move anything really, do I? Yeah, I do. Okay.
Give me a second, Dina.
Thank you.
There we go.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. What I'm here tonight to discuss is the general plan timeline. And I'm sure that many of you are wondering where we are and where we're going and how we are going to meet that deadline that in May that we need to meet. So just one slide so we can discuss as we go through this. Right now, the draft housing element was submitted to HCD on February 16th. They will complete their 60 day review on April 17th. We anticipate them using the entire 60 days. We are going to be meeting with them in the next week or so. I've been working with them to try to figure out a date to go over some of the preliminary concerns. So we can get ready for any responses that we may find. Secondly, the circulation of the draft DIR will begin tomorrow. And we will be sending out a notice of completion as well as a notice of availability. You will receive those in the, in your email. So you can see both of the documents. We will also be sending them to anybody that has been in our mailing list or interested. So they would also be able to have that link. In addition, we will be providing a hard copy to the library and a hard copy here of both the general plan and the EIR. So people who would like to see it in its flesh, so to speak, can do so. On April 29th, the consultants and myself will be holding an open house here. So we'll have a little station set up and people can come and ask questions. We'll divide them by different areas of interest and hopefully we'll be able to get the, the public involved at a, at a closer level before we look to meetings in May. Public hearing dates currently are set for May 10th before the planning commission. So they can review the documents and provide a recommendation to town council. We then slated three weeks of hearings. We're not sure we're going to need all three. I don't really know that. But we're looking at May 17th, the 24th and the 31st. Two of those are not your regularly scheduled dates. So those will be special meetings. And of course, we can look at other options if this proves to be a problem to get attendance by the council. Such as joint meetings or, you know, I don't like to suggest this because we're already doing some Saturdays, but a Saturday meeting. Where we're able to devote additional time and you don't have other things on the agenda. And with that, I'll close and allow for questions from both the council and the public.
Thank you very much. So from the council, do we have questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Wallner, please.
Sure. So the draft DIR is circulated until May 1st. You will have collected all the comments by then and then we'll respond to those comments when?
As part of the final EIR?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be all put together hopefully within that by the time we go to planning commission on the 10th.
Okay, so the final EIR should be what, so nine days later, it'll go to the planning commission and that'll be the final. And we had had a conversation, or at least I had with the town manager and town council about potentially accelerating the process for approval by having a joint planning commission council meeting. Is that something that has been
Yeah.
Set aside?
Yeah, let me answer that. So one thing that's not on that slide, after May 1st. Once we do a response to comments, we have to post that for 10 days before the council can act on it. But the planning commission can have their hearing during that 10 day period. So to shorten the timeframe, we're going to have the planning commission have their hearing while that 10 days is running. So the council, we couldn't have a joint meeting with the, with the council on that date of May 10th. Because the timeframe for the response to comments will still be running.
Okay, and then the town council meetings, you're talking about having three council meetings, those three dates to talk about the general plan. Is that right?
Yeah, to talk about the EIR, the general plan, the housing element, all of that come, well, the, the housing element is part of the general plan. So I'm slating those. I haven't, we may only need to do the 17th or the 24th and not have the 31st. The 24th and the 31st are special meetings. So we can determine that as we go forward. So I'm just letting you know that it could take more than one time for the council to look at the documents and provide direction to staff and certify. So I was just laying that out as possibilities for dates. And of course, I'm open to any other method to get there.
Okay, so I guess as you might expect, my concern is that the longer that the longer period of time we have where we haven't adopted the housing element, the more exposure we have to potential builders remedy applications. And so my understanding from the dates you've put up there is that after we receive the final comments. It sounds like Ben, you're saying that May 11th is the soonest that the council could meet to prove the housing element.
No, it's going to depend on the volume of comments we get during the draft DIR phase. Because we'll have to do a response to those comments once it's closed on May 1st. So the internal deadline is probably take a week to draft responses. If we get late responses, which oftentimes we do from other public agencies. So at the end of the, you know, like, what's the date? I think it's May 5th or 6th was the target. May 5th was the target to have our response to comments done and posted. Which will then start the 10 day timeframe for the council to act. So that brings it pretty close to the May 17th regular meeting date you already have. And I'll add at the May 17th meeting, you will have everything you need to approve. The other dates are in case you want to continue it for some other purpose.
I see. So if we needed to, or if we wanted to, and we felt like we had sufficient information. We could approve the general plan and certify the EIR on the 17th.
Correct.
Correct. And is there is there a mechanism by which we can approve the housing element before we do the others?
We're bringing it all as one package because the EIR and it's already at the same time.
Yeah.
But I will, you know, we've already discussed internally that if the 17th turns into something else and we want to just pivot and just approve the housing plan that night, we'll be prepared to do that as well.
Right. So we would have to certify the EIR.
Correct.
And then we could approve any piece of the general plan that we want.
I'd focus on the housing element, but yeah.
Housing element, the only one that's urgent, but that we could do that before we do the entire thing.
Correct.
There's an issue.
Correct.
Okay. And the soonest that we could the soonest that we could meet would be the 15th, but it's the 17th because that's our regular meeting. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. That's my question.
Sure. Thank you. Vice Mayor Fredericks, please.
Just to request, the calendar that was sent to us as part of the packet has some wrong dates on it if we can get.
This is the correct, this is the correct date.
And this is the one we got today or yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then with respect to the other elements, is there any other public outreach that we plan on doing or any comments we need to receive? I know they're, in terms of importance, it's sort of, you know, the elephant in the room is this. But I, I know, I don't want to approve everything and realize that we then forgot about other things.
It's, the document is open to all comments for all elements. So in answer to your question, sure, they can, the public can opine on any of the elements and the EIR.
And is that, or is it already posted online somewhere or is that kind of?
So the draft general plan will be posted at the same time as the EIR tomorrow. I do have the draft general plan completed. I'm waiting for the EIR to drop in my mailbox tomorrow morning and it will go to the state as required. And then we will do additional noticing because I want to make sure that everybody on the email list has that link. And we will also send to the agencies separately just to double it up.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions?
Go ahead. And what is the publicity plan for the workshop? Is that going to be advertised in the ARC and all those sorts of things?
Advertised in the ARC and I'm going to work with the town clerk to put out a Tiptalk. We're going to send an E, I think what's really generated most of the responses for public comment has been Tiptalk as well as our mailing list that we have, which is close to 100 people at this point in time. We'll also advertise in the ARC.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for the update. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So next on our
We should take public comment.
Oh, sorry. Yes. My bad. So, Matt and Clerk, at this time I'll open it up to public comment. And as always, identify yourself by raising your hand and then you'll have three minutes as we call on you.
Seeing none.
Okay, I will close public comment period then. And we will move on to town council reports. Is there anyone on the council who has a report they'd like to deliver? No, do we have a town manager report?
Just a reminder that I will be out of the office starting tomorrow and all next week and be back on Monday, the 27th.
Thank you. At this point, we're prepared to go into closed session. Do I have to take public comment on the closed session? Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on the closed session?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Then I will close.
I'm sorry, I do have one.
Oh, okay.
Deirdre.
All right.
Okay, just a reminder, I'll be out here when you're done in case you have any announcements. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. So I'll close public comment period now and we will move the meeting to closed session. Okay, great. Here everyone. Thank you. How long is the library? Like, what is the dimensions of the library?
How long is it?
There we go, we're reconvening the meeting, having completed closed session, and we have nothing to report out. Thank you, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.